I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to have you here and also to everyone that's watching us on live streaming on Facebook. I'd like to go ahead and get a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Presentations. Tonight we have Scott McMahon from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities for a presentation. Mr. McMahon, welcome to the city of La Sourd. Looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. As a member of the nation, my name is Scott McMahon with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. I'm on staff with Flirtin Hood, which is the firm that represents the Coalition of which La Sourd is a member. So, thank you for your support over the years for this effort. What I want to do tonight is give you a quick overview of what happened in this legislative session on issues like local government aid, childcare, funding, and so on and so forth. Give you a sense as to kind of the political dynamics that we're experiencing at the Capitol. Give you a sense as to where headed looking at 2020 and answer any questions that you all may have about the Coalition and what we're up to. So, first off, just as a quick overview, we represent 97 cities across the state of Minnesota on a wide array of topics. Frankly, whatever it is that you all want us to work on, we will work on. The bulk of our work focuses on local government aid and property taxes, economic development, annexation and land use, transportation, and environmental regulation. A little bit of overview as to kind of the political changes that happened this legislative session. So, the thing that we had going in Minnesota was with the last election, we had a new governor. We didn't change parties, but we changed people. And we had a change in the control of one chamber in the legislature. Minnesota House changed from GOP control over to DFL control. The Senate was not up for reelection. But the one thing that we did see was that within the DFL control of the House, it became a very metro-centric majority party there. If you go from the St. Croix River to the west metro, it is entirely DFL-controlled throughout the metro without a lot of DFL representation in greater Minnesota. Minnesota is the only divided government in the Union. We're the only ones that have one party control in the Senate. We did know that from the election that the public really does desire transparency, bipartisanship, and end to the actimony. And I'll let you be the decider as to whether or not we accomplish that when we cap over this session. We did have some competing views as to where things were headed for the state. We did have bipartisan agreement that the budget surplus that was reported in November was unreliable. In November, it was reported as about $1.5 billion in a surplus. By the time we got around to the February forecast, that was down to about a billion. And by the time we got to the end of session, in many ways, the budget surplus had disappeared. In the DFL's view, we've got a revenue problem. We saw the House majority propose a number of gas or tax and fee increases. The most played out one in the media was the gas tax debate where they proposed an increase in the gas tax up over the coming years. The GOP's views, which was portrayed in the Senate, was a way of a spending problem. Even though we had this projected surplus, the Senate GOP proposed some budget cuts in their budget proposal. So, the tension that we had between the House and Senate was pretty stark this legislative session. We had a number of goals that we were working on your behalf. The first one is one we've been working on for some time now was restoring LGA back up to the 2002 levels. If you recall, we've had some pretty drastic cuts as the economic downturn back in 2002. And we've been working steadily over the years to get that back up to the 2002 level. We're also working on a bonding bill. First off, to fully fund the wastewater programs that were included in the previous year's bonding bill. We're also advocating for a new grant program to help simulate the childcare market in greater Minnesota, which we know is experiencing pretty difficult times, as well as for the other economic development programs like the Business Development Public Infrastructure Program. Beyond bonding, we had some proposals on childcare grants to support child care providers to gain their training and business development to try and pop off the industry. And we're also working on a comprehensive transportation package. Those are the primary things we're working on. There were other things that we were engaged on, with the bulk of our time was spent on those five areas. We are happy to say that we have finally hit the point where LGA is being increased to the 2002 level. We've been working on this one, provided that can help happen now. And we're glad to no longer have to say we need to restore LGA back to that level. Now we can talk about things about inflation and getting it back up to the spending level we know it needs to be, but we're past that point anyway. We do know that our successes, we're not certain. We had some great opportunities responding to our efforts. Governor Walz was a very strong champion for the LGA proposal. We heard a lot during the campaign trail, as well as in the rollout of this budget, that LGA was a primary focus for him. We also had a great champion in the House Tax Chair, Paul Marquardt, who's a longtime LGA champion and a longtime prior to come to the legislature, Mayor of Dilworth up outside of Fargo. So, he's somebody who really understands the power of these dollars when they come into communities and the impact that it has on the ground. We also had some challenges. On the Senate side, we had the Senate Tax Chair, frankly, who was hostile to LGA. And we have a new DFL legislators who were seeking other forms of property tax relief and some different ideas on LGA as well. We did have relentless advocacy. We proposed a $30.5 million increase to the program. We worked across the state to get media outreach. We had columns being printed in the media across the state. We had a number of action alerts where we're reaching out to the city legislators and staff to reach out to your legislators. So, thank you for responding to those. We're great advocates on a day-to-day basis, but there's no stronger voice in the policymakers and the constituents and the local county leaders reaching out to them. So, we appreciate the time that you all take to respond to those requests. We took nothing for granted, and we're at the Capitol day in and day out making these things happen. And we're glad that the final tax bill did have that LGA money included in it. So, looking at the impact for La Sourd, if you look from left to right, you see what your 2019 certified LGA amount was. The second bar represents what the Governor's Bill proposed, followed by the House Bill. And then you can see the Senate Bill basically did no change to the program. The red bill shows where you should be for your 2020 LGA. And then you'll see an additional bump up in 2021. They didn't fully fund the program the first year of the biennium. Then about another $5 million comes in this year of the biennium. So, you could see another little bump up on your 2021 levels. Looking forward, some of the things we need to be looking at with regards to LGA is we're back at the 2002 level, but we know the purchasing power of 2002 is not what we are in 2019. That's the factor that we need to be talking about moving forward. We also have a conference to happen. And when that happens, LGA is one of the first things that policymakers look at for a 2021 deal there, for this needs. And as we deal with news from the country, we know we're buying too far right with the economic downturn. So, this is what we're watching very closely. We also have concerns about the rise of suburban legislators and what that may mean for LGA. Obviously, we know LGA is an important program for many houses in the city hall, less important program for the suburbs and the suburbs, and then critical program that we have in greater Minnesota. So, as we see a greater concentration of majority House members coming from the suburbs and the suburbs, we're a little concerned as to how much priority LGA will be for them moving forward. We also know that we'll probably do an update on the formula. The last formula change in LGA came in 2013. And we know after about a decade that the variables we use in the program start to get a little wonky. So, that's probably something we'll start talking about during the 2020 legislative session. The second major issue we're working on this session was childcare. Right now, greater Minnesota works toward about 35,000 places for kids to go to as their parents are heading out to their rural, rural bases. We know that this shortage is hampering economic development across the state. Greater Minnesota, we hear that employers can't hire and retain workers because from a home standpoint, they can't find childcare for their kids. And we know that families are leaving our communities as a result. We also know that from businesses who are in a harder time deciding whether or not to locate or grow in our communities with childcare being one of the top variables that they're looking at. So, not only is this a childcare issue for us, but it's manifesting itself as an economic development issue as well. So, we had a proposal for to try and get $3 million to the city initiative foundations, this area being served by the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation out of Owatonna, for them to continue to take the scale of the work they have been doing to provide training and business assistance for childcare providers, to facilitate community planning as to how you can address it on a local basis, to engage the private sector to get businesses more involved in the problem, and to recruit more providers in the marketplace. We're also seeking $10 million for our new facilities grant program. They'll provide grants up to $50 million with a 50% community match to build and expand childcare facilities within your cities. Within this effort, we built a very diverse coalition of everybody from the businesses, the State Chamber, and the Business Partnership, down to the childcare advocates, really working on the issue. We, again, had extensive media effort that led to a stack of about a remit of paper things we could drop in the Governor's Desk just to exemplify how critical this issue is in our communities. We had bills that were heard across numerous committees, as well as some grassroots efforts. We're pleased on the grassroots side. In June, Governor Walz had a childcare roundtable in Little Falls. And one of the first things that he said during his public comments in it was, he knows the childcare crisis is a statewide issue, but he knows it's manifesting itself very differently in greater Minnesota, which is precisely the line that we've been using around the capitals. We know that our message is getting up to him and is affecting the way that he and his cabinet are thinking about this issue. End of the day, as the final bill came across the Governor's Desk, we were successful in securing about $750,000 for the initiative foundations, with an additional $750,000 for Department of Economic Employment Development's childcare grant program, with 60% of those dollars having to go in greater Minnesota. So, out of that $1.5 million, that's out of $10 million in new money that the jobs committee had. So, we were really glad to see 50% of the new money that the jobs committee had to spend this session coming into the childcare issues in greater Minnesota. We did secure $10 million in bonding in the House Bill, but as you know, the bonding bill didn't clear out of the legislature in the final days of the special session. But this will be one of the key issues we're working on this legislative session. Other economic development wins, we did get an additional $1.8 million for the BDPI program. We secured $40 million more for the border-to-border broadband program, $1.3 million for the job training incentive program, which we're pleased on this one. There's a proposal in the House to expand this really critical program from being a greater Minnesota-focused program to being a statewide. And we know once greater Minnesota programs go statewide, in a couple of years, they become a metro program or they disappear. So, we're glad we were able to keep this as a greater Minnesota-specific program. And then there's a new program that was created focusing on grants for infrastructure around regional airports to try and spur greater economic development in those cases. One of the big issues we had going into session dealt with clearing up an issue that happened two sessions ago around the wastewater infrastructure issue. As you recall, during the 2018 session, the legislature approved about $60 million for wastewater infrastructure that rather than backing it by GO bonds as we usually have during a bonding bill, they backed it up through the Environmental Natural Resource Trust Fund bonds. As soon as that bill was signed, we had a number of environmental groups sue the state. Because of the use of those funds, they didn't think that they could be used for wastewater treatment facilities. And as soon as those lawsuits were filed, those bonds became junk bonds, and the state couldn't issue them anymore. So, even though we had tremendous need to get these dollars out in our communities, the state had no issue to follow through with that investment. So, one of the first things that we had a strong focus on when the session started was to get the legislature and the governor to pass a bonding bill early in session to get that $60 million back out into the bond market and those dollars back in our communities on these projects. So, we were glad to see in March that the governor and legislature made an agreement on that program and got those dollars starting to flow into our communities. We did also see comprehensive public facilities authority funding. Our bill asked for $128 million through the PFA program, $56.8 million in that bond program with the remainder to cover additional 2019 needs. We did have a full press at the legislature. The governor and the legislature agreed to fix the 2018 problem in March, but we couldn't get the rest of it taken care of. So, one of the big focuses we'll have going forward is to push for that remaining money that we need in the PFA program. And we'll be looking at the bonding bill this session for that one to go through. On the transportation side, we had a pretty aggressive transportation policy this year, focusing on $50 million for city streets, $25 million for cities over 5,000, and $25 million in permanent funding for cities under 5,000. We were also asking for at least $200 million in bonding for the Quarters of Commerce program to allow to continue on with $25 million per year in cash. The House Bill. The House had a very aggressive transportation bill that was backed by increasing about everything that they could increase for funding for revenue side of it. We had the gas tax increase, we had the tab fees, we had the sale tax increase. We were pleased within their spending side that they did make permanent the funding for small city streets. They did also have over $5 million per year for larger cities, and then $300 million in bonding for the Quarters of Commerce. The Senate Bill had no new investment and actually had budget cuts for transportation in particular with the Quarters of Commerce program. They did provide funding for $250,000 for small cities in 2020 and $500 million in 2021, which means that the average small city would have gotten $250 in 2020. So, we like to say you could buy the stop sign, but you couldn't pay to actually install the stop sign. So, we know transportation something to continue on. We expect transportation to be a primary conversation on the bonding bill during the 2020 legislative session. So, the final deal, the GOP drew a red line on the taxes and the fees. The DFL decided to delay the transportation conversation in exchange for the renewal for the healthcare provider tax. We expect that the DFL is probably playing the game of what for the next election? If the DFL can take the Senate, then you have a DFL-controlled House, then the Governor's Office, and you can have a different conversation on transportation than they can in a divided government situation. The silver linings we did have on this session, we did fend off the cuts of the Quarters of Commerce program, and we did see coming out of the House historic city streets investments. And so, we hope that we can continue building support for those programs going forward. So, lessons learned and looking ahead. First off, success requires persistence. It's been a long time since 2002. We're glad that we've been there and been able to do it. But, you know, if not for CGMC running around day in and day out working on LGA, 2019 wouldn't be the year that LGA finally got back up to the level that it did. We also know that within the suburban-led House DFL, they are willing to invest money in critical programs, but they're less likely to support greater Minnesota-specific programs. In the Senate GOP, they're less interested in new spending, but they are more interested in targeting dollars into greater Minnesota-specific programs. So, in this duality that we deal with, Governor Walz is playing a more critical role than we see with a lot of governors as a result of just the political gamesmanship that we see in the legislature. So, looking ahead, again, we're going to have potential discussions on LGA formula changes. We do anticipate a large bonding bill coming up this year. We will be looking at childcare. We'll be looking at PFA wastewater and water funding, and we'll be looking at other economic development opportunities with those dollars. We also know that we do need a comprehensive transportation solution coming forward. Bonding will be part of it this session. And then funding in the 2021 will probably be a more critical part of that. We also know we're coming up in an election year, and so we'll be working and educating not only the folks who are currently in the legislature, but those who are trying to get new jobs in the legislature in the next election to make sure that they understand fully what it means for communities in greater Minnesota. But we know that the work begins now for successful sessions. Just a couple of things to highlight for you. One, we have our fall conference coming up in November up in Alexandria. We would love to see as many of you who can come up and join us for that one. That's the conference where we'll be setting our policies for the upcoming session. We also have the Bush Control Commissioner coming up to join us for luncheon. So, it'll be a good opportunity for some robust conversations. Legislative Action Day is March 11. We'd love to see you come down to the Capitol and meet with your legislators and help move our message forward. And our summer conference will be July in Red Wing. So, that's my quick overview. Happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Sir, I've got a couple of things for you. First off, we will have representation at the Alexandria CGMC conference, at least one, possibly two.
Much appreciated.
We're very much looking forward to attending that. The two questions that I have, first one deals with the economic downturn. Of course, none of us have a crystal ball, but I wonder what kind of barometer is being used right now from CGMC to perhaps console cities that are part of CGMC, what we can do on our end to try to avoid that particular type of event from happening, if at all. And the second thing I wanted to ask you is going back to the transportation, the $25 million for cities under 5,000. Did you say that was a grant? That's grant money that's available? And if so, what do we do as a city to go ahead and get some of that grant money?
So, for the first question on that, my downturn, I wish we had the power as cities to say it's not going to happen.
Right.
We are, from an economic cycle standpoint, several years past when normally the downturn would happen. So, we're a long overdue. We're starting to see things in the marketplace that show some indication that we're probably coming up pretty close, maybe within the next year, year and a half, on recession starting to come in. Nobody has a good sense as to how big it may be. I doubt, and I really hope it's not as bad as the last one we wandered through, because that one, as we all know, was not a fun one to wander through. You know, the best thing that we can do, frankly, moving forward to try and protect LGA when that happens, is the work we can do with all of our legislators to inform them about how critical those dollars are, what they're used for. You know, we've got the House is having a special session, not a mini-session down in Winona in a week. And in the Tax Committee, they're having a number of cities down in the Winona area come in and kind of talk to them about their budget and how the cities spend money and what they do and so on and so forth. And the staff has been surprised when we've informed them that in a lot of greater Minnesota cities, their LGA increase isn't covering their increase in COLA and healthcare. And so, it's not, yes, we had a great success with getting the money back up to the 2002 level, getting $35 million more in there. But when you look at the number of cities we have across the state, it is a limited pool of money. And so, I think legislators, the more they can realize that, you know, these dollars go to pay for public safety, they go to pay for roads, they go to pay for, you know, truly the nuts and bolts things that cities need to do, will help them understand that these dollars can be protected. So, you know, communication is the key thing. We'll keep championing that issue around the Capitol on your behalf. But I think the most important thing that we can do is whatever engagement you guys can do with your local legislators and with the governor will be the critical thing on that side. And then the transportation one. So, we did have, the House did approve the funding for the small city streets, but we couldn't get the transportation bill done. And so, our hope is that that'll be something we can work on going forward. I would anticipate that there will be bonding money in 2020 that would be available for city streets. But when those dollars do come out, they would be grant dollars for cities.
Grant dollars. Thank you. Anybody else from City Council that has questions for Mr. McMahon?
I do have a comment.
Councilmember Crawford, please.
I had the opportunity to attend the summer conference this year. Bradley Peterson, your director, used a little more colorful language than relentless advocacy. I can't remember exactly, but the gist of it was there. The point is, you've mentioned it sort of throughout the presentation, but I'd like you to take it to two levels and give us some advice for how we can best advocate, in other words, at what level and what form, both as city elected officials, but also what our citizens, our general public can do. Because I think we often overlook that. Would you please?
Sure. You know, I think there are a number of ways that city officials, you can work to help support the advocacy effort that we do. One is be engaged with what we're doing. So, taking the time to come up to our conferences to learn about kind of what we're up to and how we're doing it is helpful. Keeping these issues front and center with your local legislators is the best thing you can do. So, when your folks are back here and they're having community listening sessions, or if you're having lunch or coffee with the folks, you know, just keep these issues in front of them. Let them know not only that the programs are important, but how you're utilizing them. Because the more real that we can make it for them, the more they understand how critical these dollars are for our cities. You know, I think Chairman Marquardt, the House Tax Chair, is a great example. You know, coming into being Tax Chair, having been a small city mayor, you know, we don't have a better champion than Representative Marquardt on this issue than that we have right now. Because he has lived that life of understanding the dollars. And so, I think the more we can just help educate legislators from that standpoint. The other thing is, you know, the governor has been a very strong champion on this issue. So, if there are opportunities to get the governor's ear or his leadership team, it will help reinforce with him how critical it is for him to remain and stay strong as a champion on the issue. And then the last thing I would say, just from engaging folks, and I'll talk about your local folks here in a moment, is, you know, there are other groups out there representing cities, whether it's the League of Minnesota Cities or other groups. You know, take the opportunity to engage with those folks as well. We do have a harder time getting greater Minnesota folks engaged in those groups because of the distance and that side of it. And so, at times, they do become more metro-focused just as a result of who's at the table. So, you know, I know they're always looking for people to serve on the League of Minnesota Cities Board, things like that. So, if we can take a stronger greater Minnesota voice into some of those opportunities, it will only be helpful. And then as far as working with your local constituents, you know, one of the things I question when I'm in communities is how much do your citizens know the power and the impact that things like LGA have on your ability to provide them the services for your ability to keep control of your property taxes because of the state investment coming into your community. So, if there are opportunities through, you know, local leaders such to, you know, help educate your constituents as to what these dollars are doing, how you're playing them into your budget, will help them understand, you know, the impact this is having on their bottom line as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember families?
One of the things that wasn't mentioned in your presentation, but I have to say is definitely a change in turn for from the last election was MPCA, especially here in the Minnesota River Valley. And it's greatly appreciated, the changes that have happened there and their willingness to be able to work with us, though.
You know, we haven't tried to do that. And I think one of the things that unfortunately happened to help move this conversation was right after Governor Walz was inaugurated back in early January. And then we immediately had the news down in southwest Minnesota about the TruShrimp plant that was going to go in in Luverne, pulling out and going across the border to South Dakota. I think that was a very quick wake-up call for the governor to kind of say, we need to, this is an area we need to be paying close attention to. And it's something that I think we're seeing a difference in the leadership of the agency than we've seen over the past year. So, we're glad that the commissioner is going to come join us in Alexandria. That's something that we didn't always have the opportunity with the previous administration. So, we look forward to continuing and building that relationship with the agency from that standpoint.
Anybody else? Well, again, Mr. McMahon on behalf of La Sourd City Council, we very much appreciate you coming here to La Sourd and giving us your time and educating us the way you have. And our attendees are looking forward to the Alexandria conference. Thanks, sir.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. All items on a consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen or request, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered normal sequence. On tonight's consent agenda, we have city council minutes for September 9, 2019. We have a resolution approving disbursements through September 23, 2019. We have a proclamation for infants remembered in silence or iris. And we have an Arbor Day resolution. We also have approved the construction of the activity starting at 7:00 a.m. on Saturdays for the Eltop project or the Sidewalk project. Can I get a motion to go ahead and approve our consent agenda for tonight? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. Public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five of us per person. Comments will be limited to five bills per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided and identify themselves by providing a name and address. Tonight, we have Mr. Kermit Helbert from the City of LaSue that wants to talk to us about the Saddle Club. Mr. Helbert, if you could go to the podium, please.
I've never talked to this thing before, and I still can't hardly hear what yous are talking about there. But I'm here on the Saddle Club down there. I'm sure you're all aware of how many times that thing flooded down there. And this time, the city always took care of the, well, we can't shut off the electricity. The city always shut off the electricity, just automatically, I guess, because we never notified anybody. It always shut it off. This year, it didn't get shut off. So he calls up and says, you need electrician. Well, I went down there and definitely needed an electrician because it just demolished everything that was on the pole down there, breaker box and meter and everything. So I went and got new smires and they just happened that they could come down and within a couple of days and get it back where it should be. And that was about the last days in July. And anyway, I think it was around the second or third, I brought the bill up to the city hall here and she said she'd get it to the right hands. So I don't know if it was her, got it, got it in the right hands or not. But anyway, I got a second, second notice that it wasn't paid. So I come down and see what we could do or how some of that bill is gonna get paid. They're businessmen, and they like to get paid too. They don't like to have, wait six months to get that. We try to keep that place down there in fairly good shape, mowing and stuff. This is the first year, or I would say the worst year that it ever flooded so long, because we couldn't do anything down there all summer. Finally, I took the brush cutter and put it behind my four-wheeler, went down there and motor off, or made it look like somebody was doing something because it was too soft for anything else to get in there. And so that's why I'm here. The fir-, the first time it flooded, I don't know just what year that was. Anyway, it emptied the St. Peter's Sorbonne. It all ended up down here at LaSue. We had stuff that deep all out of there. The city, that time, I don't know if they had some people sent in to serve or something, I think, come down and help the city. So anyway, they sent about 10 people down there from that, sent them, sent them to serve to help us scrub up that time. That was the first time. And since then, we've always managed to get our own, get it all back together again. Did the bill get in the right hands, or anybody know anything about it, or what?
Sir, what we're, what we're, what we do when we have public comments is we go ahead and listen to the information from the citizenry, such as what you're describing to us now. And we do not take action at this particular council meeting. It's something we're gonna have to go ahead and do a little more fact-finding on. And then we'll make it an agenda item if we find that it's something that we need to in the future. But I do have a couple of questions for you. The Saddle Club property, does that belong to the Saddle Club?
No, it don't. It belongs to the city.
It belongs to the city of LaSue.
Our Saddle Club started up in 1950. Our arena was up here where the hospital is now. And they were gonna build, build up there or do something up there. And Art Anderson, at that time the city attorney, was a member of our Saddle Club at that time. And he suggested to go down there and let's screw down there and make an arena down there. So that's where, that's how come we got down there.
Okay. My second question would be the, in the past, who has been paying the electrical? Has that been something that's been done by the Saddle Club?
I didn't catch it.
The, who's been paying the electrical bill for the electricity?
I pick a bill every month.
You guys pay to build it every month?
Yeah, we get a bill every month.
And so bringing Newsmire in, that was to fix the existing breaker box?
Yeah.
And that's what you're looking for, is far as reimbursement for this breaker box repair? Is that what you're talking about?
That's it. He has to, had to put in a new breaker box.
And how much money are we talking about, sir?
All, all, our breaker box that we got there is high in, in our buildings. So the water never affects that. So when the water gets up to, this, this breaker box, that time was put down there just, just as high as a fence. So if the water gets up as high as a fence, it hits that breaker box. That's what, it always went underwater, but the electricity was shut off. When the water went away, everything, well, sometimes we had to take some of the receptacles in our building because they're only that high and the water was up there like that. We had to clean them out, you know, before they could turn the electricity back on. But we always did that.
Okay. So what is the total amount of money that you're looking for here? The total amount of money that you're saying that you've received a second notice? What's the total?
The bill. I got a second notice here.
And that second notice is the Newsmire, I take it?
Yeah, but that, that's it don't have every, the first, the bill I turned in to the city, got everything on there that they'd used or put in new. About $800 worth of parts and $600 worth of labor, it's come to 1,400 is, is what it did, or a little over 1,400.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Helbert?
I have a question for Casper, I think.
Councilmember families?
Is that park part of, part of Mayo Park?
Yes, it's on the property that Mayo Park is, is located on.
Do you own the buildings and things to that?
We don't. So there's a, there's a lease agreement that the city has with the Saddle Club. It was established in 1950. Basically, the lease terms are that the Saddle Club can have their, their stuff on the, on the land. In turn, they maintain that portion of the land. So there's, there's nothing in there about ownership of electrical services, things like that. It is from 1950, so it's, it's something that's pretty old.
Anybody else have any other questions or concerns? Mr. Helbert, thank you. We'll certainly make it a point of getting back to you, sir. Okay?
You can't decide if you're gonna pay this or not?
We do not take action when it comes to public comments, sir. Okay, not at this particular meeting. We have to do some more fact-finding.
Well...
But we appreciate you taking your time to come down here and letting us talk about your issue.
I don't think we, the Saddle Club should pay for something the city failed to do that they automatically did for, I don't know how many years.
I can understand your concern, sir.
So...
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we now move on to our reg-, oh, by the way, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address City Council? Seeing nobody, I'm going to entertain a motion and go ahead and close the public comment portion of our meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. We now move on to our regular agenda. The first item on the docket is 7 Alpha, which is order preliminary engineering report. Accept preliminary engineering report at a public hearing for CSAH 22, the 112 Turnback Improvement Project.
Mayor Hage, members of City Council. Part of this item, we've already done, but we are redoing it because the scope and the areas that are related to the Turnback Project have changed, which Corey has presented in the past about. So the ordering the preliminary engineering report and the accepting of the preliminary engineering report are related. It's required for the Chapter 429 process to levy assessments against properties related to this project. And then the, the third item is to set the public hearing date, which we're proposing to accept the, or set the public hearing date for October 14th, 2019. This will give us enough time to notice the paper, publish it, and make sure that it's in the papers for two cycles. So with that, I have, with Corey DePain here to kind of go over these things, I've put some of the project details up here for visuals. Feel free to ask any questions about the process, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Coogan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers.
Welcome, sir.
Appreciate that. So a lot of this is gonna be, I, I guess, a repeat of last meeting. I gave a pretty thorough update of where we're at with the project, and, and most specifically, the, the change of project area. So a- as we talk, Trump County 112, the Turnback Project, as it's been proposed, which we are now identifying as county-stated Highway 22, that's what it will be signed. That project's still in the bulk from, starting from the south end, going to the north, which is from County Road 115 all the way to Trump Highway 169. And as we discussed last meeting, there's gonna be this middle section now that we are removing and allocating those resources to Cassock 26, Ferry Street, in a sense. And that's picking up from Mountain Wood, working east then past the community center to high school, getting to Kingsway, and then also addressing the, the last piece of that rectangle here by City Hall. So just felt like those road surfaces warranted that investment of resource greater than the, the stretch of, of North Main Street did, so. The proposal, as Jasper indicated, we had ordered this report back in July. And since that time, we made the changes of the project area. So to have the ordering of the report, you do have to designate what that project scope or that area is. So we have to reorder that report consistent now to what the report's areas are. And those are, those changes we discussed. So I'd be happy to entertain, you know, going to the, going within the preliminary engineering report. Typically, this is more on the front end of a project, certainly a city-led project. This would have been more on the forefront. But because of all the buildup with the county and the turn back and, and understanding that it's ultimately county jurisdiction, we are well into this project process with this report. So it's a lot of repetition of information, the feasibility. You know, from a city standpoint, this project is happening. So we're actually coming along as a partner, upgrading, you know, sand, tear, water infrastructure, realizing we don't have the cost of the, of the surfacing work. So it's a, it's a very timely project for us. And, and ultimately, it's a project that, that, that has to happen and it's gonna be happening. But the preliminary engineering report still speaks to that and is necessary for that 429. The message has been consistent all the way along. The city intends to assess for this project. We are in the process of getting benefit appraisals to equate the benefit to those benefiting properties. So for that process, this preliminary feasibility report is necessary. And then if you're calling for 429 processes, two hearings. There's the, the public improvement hearing, and that's on, on the, the front end or more on the initial side of it, where there's to be able to be, you know, comment and feedback provided by those benefiting properties. And then at that time, the council can consider that, consider that comment. And then they actually make the formal approval to, to move forward with the project, ordering those plans and specs. And then once that's done, as part of the acceptance of the plans and specs, then you order the public assessment hearing, and that's the second hearing. And then that actually gets into the actual assessment and the benefit. And at that time, then you set what that benefit is in that final assessment role. So the, the public hearing that, that we're asking to have scheduled would be that first hearing, that public improvement hearing. So... Questions, all?
Yeah, just to be clear, the, the assessment hearing that is proposed for January of 2020, we would not have that, the assessment numbers for the October 14th meeting, is that correct?
That's very correct, yep. The, the expectation for 29 is you have a reasonable estimate. And so I think we, we have a reasonable estimate on fast project practice, Second Street, most notably in 2017. So I think we'll be able to speak to a range, and we have, we have provided ranges already. That would be the one expectation, Mr. Mayor. And then once, once that project's formally, you know, authorized and that, that project preparation begins, and, and most importantly, we get the feedback from the benefit appraisal, which we don't anticipate till likely the end of the year, then that meeting in, in early 2020, that assessment hearing is when, when we have to provide those hard numbers.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. DePain?
I have a question. In the materials provided, there was a link to what I thought was the preliminary report. How does that fit with what we're doing tonight?
The 172?
Hyperlink to 152-page report. I read it backwards just for the fun of it, because it was so long.
Sure. Are you asking as far as like the...
What is that?
With the preliminary engineering report?
Yeah.
So the, the preliminary engineering report, essentially what it is, is it's a, it's a justification of why you're moving forward with the project. You know, it's a, you document the existing condition, the believed inefficiencies or, or, you know, substandards related to that infrastructure. You look at feasibility from a cost standpoint, the funding, where, where, you know, what is the feasibility to, that as a city you can move forward that proposed improvement. Talks about schedule, setting an expectation for when you're gonna hit these milestones in, in 429. And then it is, it's quite likely documented. This is a, this is a pretty sizable project. And so you get the, you know, in the, the geotech reports included in there. We've done a substantial large public involvement already, this project. We've had two open houses. We did a corridor-wide questionnaire. So we included the results from that to, to give context that we are requesting feedback. And we've been actively engaging with those properties along the corridor. So I guess I hope to answer your question, Councilmember Crowman. But there, there's a lot, awful lot of information in there. But ultimately, it's to, to lay out the, the framework for what you are, are accepting and, and most notably, what we are moving forward as collective project.
I appreciate that. And I, I would say, I'm not trying to be funny here, that was an extensive report. It showed why we have a city engineer, quite frankly. It's quite a report. And my question is, that, that is the one we're operating from now? That's what wasn't clear to me.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Question for a city administrator, is this report available on our city website?
Y- yes, it is. So that link is directly posted on the city website. Corey sent it to us.
I asked that specifically is to make sure that if we have any citizens out there that have any kind of curiosity whatsoever, what we are talking about is available on the City of LaSue website. Is there any other questions that anybody has for Mr. DePain?
Do we know where they're starting at? Are they starting on, are they starting on the north side of town, or south side of town to come?
I, I can speak to that if you'd like to. We, we, we are moving forward with the, with the, with the staging plan. I think we have a pretty good feel for how this project's gonna be laid out. I'm not saying this isn't subject to change, but I would say with some, some pretty certainty, we have a plan here. how this project's gonna be laid out. Um, I'm not saying this isn't subject to change, but I, I would say with some, some pretty certainty, we have a plan here. I think the project was started at ninety-three, uh, Main Street Bridge. It started at that intersection. Um, well, you know, we have some experience of, of having that roadway closed at that time of year, that early springtime. Um, I would say we, we wanna focus on that interior one twelve bridge, um, Forest Street Ferry. That's most notably the, the porous pavement condition. Um, that's the most extensive work with regards to utility work. So I think it makes a lot of sense to, to get started there. So that would, um, essentially start at Bridge Street. We'd work away up, um, work up, way up the Hill Fourth, uh, work on Ferry. All the while Elmwood would remain open, likely Ferry to the east then. Um, and then we would, we would likely start down Elmwood itself. There's gonna be some phase change happening, some staging there, um, understanding, you know, the commercial industrial end that needs access, you know, consistently and constantly for you know, deliveries and customers. So we'll have a, we'll have a staging, uh, split on Elmwood. Um, and then with this added Ferry, we're not certain how that's gonna fit in yet, but we realize that's sensitive to school start. So we're likely looking at mid-August completion for that. So that will fit in as well. And then ultimately just that consistent theme of this is a two-year project. Um, so, uh, we're, we're anticipating the very south end of Elmwood would be twenty twenty-one. Um, and then that times well with the rural portion. Um, and then this north end of Commerce, um, you know, we have some flexibility when that's staged. I'm guessing that's gonna be twenty twenty-one as well. So hopefully that gives you a little guidance. There's gonna be a lot more information coming with that, but, um, you know, with the staging, we do have to set some parameters, some expectation for completion dates, things like that. But I think generally that, that chronological order is what, what we're anticipating right now.
So for mid-August, what, what shape are you planning or think that we're going to be in for Giant Celebration, which is the first weekend of August?
Yeah, I, I guess I, I, I don't, don't wanna begin to, to communicate that we have this all figured out and, and certainly not down to, to date ranges and, um, expectations of, of payment surfaces, but very well aware of Giant Days and the significance that has for this community. So we'll be very cognizant, um, as we lay out those final contracts to, to make sure that that's the most successful event that, that it can be. But, um, I, you, you know, I don't have this specific, so tag that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Give me just a moment, please, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Let, let me ask Mr. Bean thing and our city administrator. This is what confused me. The recommendation in here, we've got, apparently the preliminary report is done. It's attached, but the first sentence reads, "Staff recommends that the city council adopts the attached resolution ordering the preliminary engineering report." Wait a minute, we've got it. What are we ordering it? That's where it's up here.
Um, I, I can address that. So we're, we're doing them both on the same day. So we're ordering it and we're accepting it.
So, Mr. Bean thing's gonna be a miracle work on producing immediately.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you, I just wanted to show.
Yeah, and that, it, that, that's fairly common practice with these preliminary engineering reports. Um, we did technically order it back in July. So they've been working on it since July, but because of the scope change of this, they, they obviously had to change.
So this one includes the scope change.
Correct, yep. So the, the one that's in the link is the one that we would be accepting, yes.
I'm fine.
So includes the scope changes. Anybody? So we basically are looking at, uh, three different, uh, motions here. The way I read this, the first one is to looking for a motion to adopt the attached resolution ordering and accepting the preliminary engineering report for County State Highway twenty-two, or what's known as the one twelve turn back pro- improvement project, as well as just accepting the preliminary engineering report and order a public improvement hearing for October fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Which of the two that we have in front of us involve, I only see two motions.
Section.
Two resolutions.
If I may, um, the, the calling of the public hearing on the improvement is part of resolution zero two six.
Right, it's the second part.
So there's actually two resolutions. So we need two separate motions for each, one, one for each resolution.
One for each resolution. The way that I stand corrected, let's go ahead and start then with the resolution R twenty nineteen dash zero two five, ordering the preparation of report on improvement. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. And the second motion, which consists of two parts, is the receiving the feasibility report and calling the hearing on improvement. And that hearing is set to be on October fourteenth, twenty nineteen at the La Sura City Hall at six thirty P M. Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion too is carried. Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for correcting that. Appreciate that. We now move on to item seven Bravo, which is the congressional parks advisory committee, or what we call the RPAC, the bylaws amendment, city administrator approval.
Mayor Hague, members of City Council, uh, you will find, uh, some additional information that was handed out here with some updates to the bylaws, both the redline version and the clean version, uh, after feedback from, uh, from the mayor on this. Uh, we, we changed it slightly. So, um, what we're looking at doing here, uh, with the RPAC bylaws is it would add a city council member as a voting member. And that voting member, that city council member would also be the vice chair of the board. It would reduce the number of city council appointed citizen members from five to four, so we would still maintain a four-person board. And there's some logistics stuff I wanna talk about, a little bit about that. Uh, and then it provides also some cleanup of the language related to the vice chair election, uh, of officers. So how the vice chair was elected previously was by the board. Here we're saying it'll be that city council appointed, um, member instead. So in summary, um, we still have a five-member board consisting of four citizen appointees and a city council member appointee. That one city, sit, and we will have, sorry, we will have one city council ex officio member appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. Um, logistically, I'll talk a little bit about that. We have two members of the, the board currently that have terms that expire in twenty nineteen. Uh, depending on the city council's appetite to be able to roll this out immediately or wait until the end of the year, um, depending on that direction, uh, we would have to either wait and only fill one of those seats at the end of the year, or see if there's somebody that would like to resign or otherwise say that they're no longer on the board. Um, so logistically, there's some things to think about. There isn't any, the, another option would be just to operate the board with six members, uh, through twenty nineteen and, and keep those people on. And as those appointments run out, then only fill one of them. So there's a couple of different things. And depending on the, the appetite of city council to move forward with some of these changes, we could talk about the logistics of that moving forward. Um, so what we're looking for is just feedback on the bylaws amendments. And I understand the, the redlines, um, are a little bit difficult to read, so sometimes the clean version is something to look at. There's any questions or changes that City Council wants, or any, I'm here, I'm here to answer those questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilor Coleman, please.
I'm not quite sure why this is before us. It was originally approved by RPAC. It reads in the last part, procedure, the bylaws may be amended by the committee. Why do we have this?
Section one, you're referring to.
Mm-hmm.
Article four, section.
Article four, section one. It looks like we've empowered them to be their own decision maker. How weird is that? I don't understand.
City administrator approval, please.
We have. And, and the idea was that City Council could, would, would adopt these bylaws to begin with. And then RPAC would then post them and modify them as they feel fit. These are some pretty large, uh, kind of framework type changes that RPAC probably shouldn't be making. We could make an amendment in there about who makes those types of amendments, um, because it would be, it's, it would be kinda odd for RPAC to propose this as opposed to City Council. So logistically, there, we could add a section in there or make it more clear about some of these more framework type, uh, amendments that are being made. But I, personally, I think that's one hundred percent appropriate for these types of changes to come from City Council. I, I think it was a an oversight, or we didn't really think about coming back and changing these when we adopted these.
Who was we? Who, who was the we that adopted them?
City Council.
Seems strange, then. It reads that they may be amended by the committee. Should've been the City Council. We didn't catch it.
Yeah, exactly. We're gonna have to obviously make a change to article four, section one on here, that the City Council has that authority as opposed to the committee itself.
If, if that's a, if that's a change that we wanna make?
We can definitely do that.
To, may I address?
Council member families.
Thank you. To address, Councilmember Crogman's comments, uh, part of it is, one, there's an issue with having quorum to make those decisions. Two, there is the, uh, the, the concept behind it is to have a city council member, um, in a vice chair position where they can, one, vote, but two, be a counselor to the chair. Because we have citizens that are on there that are committed to, uh, to the betterment of the community, but not quite sure how to move forward with certain things. And that's why even making this decision is a difficult decision. This would be better be, being done by City Council to help make this go stronger for them, if that makes sense. But you had to have a quorum to even have those decisions.
It, it, it would strike me, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Mr. City Administrator, we, we simply need to change article four to indicate the bylaws may be established by, and amended by the City Council, period. That's what it would be. There's none of this two-thirds notice. It's all part of our normal procedure. We establish the bylaws for this group. And if we change that, we can make the other changes as part of that, and it's done.
Exactly.
And I'll repeat that. It would read, "The bylaws may be amended by the City Council." Maybe, are established by and may be amended by the City Council. Established by and may be amended by, period. And then all that other stuff goes away. And then we can, we could move to adopt them as printed here with that change.
Also.
Yeah, go ahead. You know.
In the second sentence, we would keep, "The all amendments shall be effective immediately after the vote, unless different effect." No, we wouldn't have to, we, we could live that particular sentence as well, too.
Automatic.
Yep, exactly.
You've got two other comments.
Councilor Sullivan.
Just a couple of corrections that I think need to be made. Um, section four should read, "Voting City Council Representative Appointed Annually By," instead of "by." And then council is misspelled, just passed up.
Which article are you in?
Section four, the first article, sorry.
Sweet.
I got it.
Okay, you got it, you got it.
And then article two, section one, I believe, representative can be removed out of that sentence. So that wouldn't make sense of the city rep, the City Council representative appoints the vice chair when it says the vice chair is the city, City Council representative.
By City Council. Put the word "by" in front of City Council on the red change for section one.
No, it should just remove representative, I believe. The vice chair, it should read, "The vice chair shall be a voting member of the committee and shall be appointed by a City Council." And then remove the, yeah, you're right. By and remove representative.
Okay. Anybody else see anything?
I have one other quick comment. It, I think it's okay, but I think people need to know it. There's always confusion when you use the term ex officio. That's in section four on the very last line. People wonder, is that person vote or not vote? In this case, it appears that the person does. In article two, section one, that person is a voting member. So we may wanna strike ex officio. It always creates confusion. Go ahead.
If I may, so this is, um, so we're gonna have one City Council ex officio member, and we're also gonna have a City Council representative that's a voting member. So there will be both, a, a City Council member that votes and a City Council member that doesn't vote, but is an ex officio.
The vice chair is the voting member and the other member from City Council is the ex officio member.
Because section five says that they, that, uh, ex, any ex officio member.
Should have no voting.
Shall have no voting.
Okay. I, that's clear. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Fabulous, you have something?
Yeah, the only other thing that I, I saw, and this was after being on this committee since it's started, um, the additions and approvals for, uh, agenda is fine where it's at, but it's frequently mistaken as a place to be able to put in ideas and concerns. Put an "I" at the end of that for, uh, an "H." Put an "I" at the end of that. That is ideas and concerns. So that, that's at the end of the meeting, 'cause otherwise they get in loops with ideas. It's all about parks and recreation and so on.
Which article and which, uh, section?
This is section five, order business.
Okay. City administrator approval.
So if I may, make a, make a comment, recommendation, um, you see sometimes in, in the agendas, future agenda items, just to have that discussion. I would recommend having that before the adjournment. So, future agenda item would be letter H and then adjournment move to I.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. Right.
Yep.
Anything else that anybody sees? Is everybody clear with the changes that we've talked about regarding this particular document?
Mayor.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Jasper, can you just send out an updated copy of this when you make your corrections?
Will do. So our action was basically to evaluate the attached proposed RPAC bylaws and act of deemed appropriate. Uh, do we feel that, uh, we can move forward with this, or we, would, do we wanna go ahead and have the changes in front of us before we take action? I feel that the changes are gonna be made, so I think that we could probably take the appropriate action tonight. So that said, could I go ahead and get a motion to accept the changes that we've made tonight and, uh, yeah, accept the change and then to adopt these bylaws, exactly.
So moved.
Let me just make sure I write this, accept and adopt. So we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried.
Yes, um, I was gonna mention that.
Yep.
As these are approved, there's another council liaison or council representative that will be vice chair. Uh, I think it would be good to also reappoint or appoint whoever is going to be the ex officio member. And I would just like direction on how you would like the board to proceed through the rest of the year with the, the membership terms, um, moving forward. As far as the membership terms go, I would say operate the board with six members until the end of twenty nineteen. And then as that falls off, we'll only have five in twenty twenty. Um, there have been quorum issues, so having that additional member may not, or maybe, maybe some added value. In general, these types of meetings are contentious in the sense that they're split votes. So there's usually, um, it's unanimous typically. So with that, I'll take any, any direction on how you'd like to proceed. Um, a motion for the ex officio, a motion for the, uh, City Council appointed vice chair, and then just direction.
I would like to propose that, uh, we, uh, name Councilmember John Fabulous as our ex officio for RPAC. I'd also like to propose that, uh, we would, uh, have Councilmember Marvin Sullivan be our vice chair, replacing Councilmember Roloff. And that we maintain the four citizens that we have in the remainder of twenty nineteen.
Uh, just a point of clarification. Do we wanna maintain the, the five citizens?
We have four, we have, we have four or five citizens.
We have five citizens right now.
I stand corrected, the five citizens that we currently have. Can I get a motion, please, for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Wait a minute, because he was looking for direction on how to move forward.
Uh, I believe I have it with, uh, the, the item that was included to keep those five members on the board until the end of the year. And then we'll, we'll just reappoint one of them in 2020.
Okay, but there's a vice chair there now and Mark wouldn't be taking that position until the beginning of the year. That's why I'm looking for direction.
We've gotta, we've gotta go ahead and make sure that we have that. Councilmember Sullivan would, uh, assume the role of vice chair immediately.
The bylaws passed with that?
Yes.
Correct, yeah. And that's, that's the way that it would, that's the way I intended to roll out was that Marvin would be the vice chair at the first meeting. Could be some reorganization, um, at that meeting, but, uh, the chair, Marvin would be the, the vice chair. He'd be the ex officio. We may have six total people there, you know, for either 2019.
Yeah, would suggest that, uh, that there's a discussion with vice chair before?
Yes, we'll, we'll assess that.
Okay. You're free to move on. Let's move on to line item seven Charlie, which is the approved resolution accepting work for the 2017 street and utility improvement and approve final payments. City Administrator approval.
Mayor Hague, members of city council, we for you is a resolution to accept the, the Second Street project from 2017. This has been a long time coming. Yeah, we've worked through some of the challenges with boulevard seating and some other things. You'll see some items in there that we're receiving in credit for. Uh, we both have, we have both, uh, Public Services Director Rich Cuchara and City Engineer Cory Bean Fang here to answer any questions about what we're doing and what's being asked. But essentially, once we finally accept this project and there's a date that's been included in there, that's when that two-year warranty period starts. So from that point in time, uh, any, any issues that we have with curb gutter, sidewalks, road surface, any utilities that we identify are an issue that the contractor had, uh, we have two years to, to bring that, that forward. Uh, there will be a punch list after, you know, probably what, 20 months or so, 22 months, um, from when the warranty period starts, and then that contractor will have to fix all of those things. So, um, you know, it accounts for settling, settlements and things like that, so. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Rich and Cory.
Director Cuchara, Engineer Bean Fang, welcome. Uh, to be clear, this is just strictly the North Second project, correct?
Yep, that is correct. Um, so, you know, as Mr. Grubu indicated, this is the 2017 street project. Um, there, there wasn't an overall lengthy punch list. It just took a lengthy amount of time to complete it. Um, but that has been completed in full. Um, a- as Mr. Grubu indicated, then, uh, the, the way that the contract reads is that acceptance of final payment is the start of that two-year correction or warranty period. Um, and that's, that's, uh, correlated to material workmanship, um, is, is the way that that warranty, uh, works and is structured. Um, one of the more sizable, uh, items that we had on the punch list was this, uh, working through the tracer wire. Um, there were, there were some complications. There's some, some issues with the tracer wire and, and its ultimate function. Um, and, and there's always a challenge with tracer wire, more specifically when you have your final wear surface and boulevards restored. Pretty difficult to, to, uh, to change or correct that, realizing that it is buried within the ground, so we were able to, to settle on a deduction.
So before we move on, I'm asking, for the benefit of everybody who are in attendance, what exactly is the tracer wire and what is it used for?
So the, the tracer wire, um, in this project specifically was for the Santeria sewer main. And it's a, it's a, it's an insulated copper wire that's ran with utilities. And this project, it was manhole to manhole for the Santeria main, um, located within the, the roadway itself or the street itself. Um, and then that, that wire continues then to all the services, so, all the services. Um, you'll notice that the tracer wire, where that, where that ends is at those access, um, those metal, uh, metal access lids that are within the boulevard generally on the backside sidewalk. What that allows the, the city to do is to locate that for future, um, for future purposes, whether it be, um, issues with that or, or sidewalk projects or, um, gas meter replacement projects. It allows city staff to, to understand and, and locate where that, where that, where those pipes are at. Um, in this project, there was just a Santeria because of the plastic pipe. Um, Second Street, or, or North Second here as we're referring to, has ducted water main that is able to carry current with that. Um, so no, uh, generally you don't see tracer wire unless it's plastic water main, uh, which wasn't installed, so. Um, clarification on that. I just, I would say the value of the tracer wire far exceeds the deduction here. Uh, we were working through just a, a few small areas, um, very small, where it wasn't working at all. And then we had some inaccuracies in the system, um, where it was tracing, just not exactly representative where it was installed. Um, and so that's how we settled on this deduction amount, so. Um, I think we learned some things, contractor learned some things. Hopefully we'll get better and, and uh, make that system, you know, more functional for the future. That's really what the intent is. We're paying for, for future, um, with that.
So question, again, going back to this tracer wire, this eighteen hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. Are these tracer wires in place now or do we have to still install, install these? And if we have to install these, is the eighteen oh one fifty that's gonna be deducted from the overall invoice? Is that gonna be enough money to cover this expense?
There's still a deduction. All the tracer wire is in place.
Okay.
Uh, tracer wire was installed as intended. Um, we believe everywhere. It's the function of that tracer wire that, that we were in, that we were in negotiations about and discussions about. So we believe the tracer wire is installed. Um, I think there's some, some workmanship issues that maybe led to, to, um, it not functioning as, as, as intended through the contract. Um, and then, and then, um, and that's most generally not, not being positioned properly with the main to be beneficial to locate from. And generally you want to be within a couple of feet. And we, we believe that, that in some instances of tracer wire, I say on the edge of the trench instead of being more representative over the pipe itself. Um, and then just some, some inability of our equipment to, to be able to sense and, and, and trace that tracer wire, so.
So in your opinion, we're a hundred percent compliant though?
Uh, I don't believe we are a percent compliant and that's the reason for deduction.
Okay, that's the reason for the deduction.
Hey, in fact, I maybe I'll, I can answer the question. We, we can't go in there and replace the areas where there's issues because that would require us to tear up the road, the new road that, that was written. So what we try to do is come up with a resolution to this so we can close the project out. The amount of eighteen hundred dollars that was negotiated for that. It won't function the way that we, what it, what it should, but there's no real way to remedy that without digging up the road.
Do you in some way have a record of where the work was done? So you have a, a manual way to look it up in some way?
Good question. We do. We will. They're ASBILTS for the road sections, yeah. We, we, and we'll have a general idea of, of where those are. The Santeria is easy because there's manholes. The water mains are more difficult because there aren't these physical spots where you can see it, so that's what we're more worried about. Uh, but in general, we, we know where it is based on the, the ASBILTS for the project.
And the five hundred twelve megahertz that is referred to in the document, that particular signal is used to specifically locate these tracer wires?
Yeah, correct. And so there, there's an industry range for locating. Uh, the five twelve is what we, what we as a city requested and what the contract required. Um, and that is most notably probably where the discrepancy is, that, that the system is locatable at a higher frequency. Um, that frequency, as you get higher, is less, is less accurate, um, to the true location within the ground, so. Um, that most notably is where, where, um, where you're noticing this deduction. At higher frequency, we're still carrying current, so we, we're very confident the wire was in place, installed in place. Um, it's just not functioning to the intent that we, that we were hoping to pay for and ultimately have.
Councilmember Fabolous?
How much of that system percentage-wise would you say is functioning correctly?
Um, overall percentage-wise, I would say, I'd say, uh, we're, we're, we're over eighty percent. Um, I would say it, the, the way we, we sell this deduction was pretty scientific. We took the overall value of the tracer wire system and I'm, I'm misremembering what that total value was. And then we were able to, to, uh, you know, calculate what the total length of main was that we were tracing, the total length of services. Um, and city invested a significant, significant amount of time to understand what are the areas that weren't functioning as expected. Um, then taking that length of, of infrastructure, correlating that back to the total value, we settled on the deduction amount, so. Um, I, I think the total system was, was around twenty thousand dollars, so. Um, we're just short of, you know, about, about twenty percent, so over eighty percent functioning. Um, and to speak to, to Mr. Mayor's comment, there's a lot of redundancy in, in the locating as well and in, in the, the records of what was in place. We have the ASBILTS. We have service ties to all the connections that exist in main. If you drive Second Street, you'll see we have the stamping on the, on the face of curb, water. W S for sanitary. Um, we've got those access boxes where the tracer wires come out of the ground. Um, so there's notable redundancy, um, that the tracer wire is just, is just another effective way and, 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 um, you know, I think something that, that we, uh, wanted as, as a city form of infrastructure, so. Um, it's not as if we don't know where it is. It's just, um, this is one of the more, the more convenient ways to locate those when you get a, when you get a locate ticket and staff time is valuable, so. Um, that's the reason we, we correlate a value to that.
We very much appreciate the interruption that we put on you there.
No.
It's important for us to understand this because most certainly we'll probably get asked this by one of our citizens and it's nice to know what the answer is, so.
I appreciate the questions. And then just to finish here, so what, what we have before tonight is final project closeout. And with that, then all required documents have been received. Um, we've got the, the subcontractor certs, the IC one thirty-four forms. We've got the consent disert that, um, like the contractor has been paid the amount that, that we are indicating that they've been paid. Um, a- as a city project, you always have a percent retainage. It's kind of our enforcement to get all the documentation, to work through the punch list. And then you'll, you'll notice that the final payment tonight is the release of that, the release of that retainage. Um, and, and essentially the, the closing out of the project.
Councilmember Fabolous?
Yes, my question is to Rich. Rich, can you live with this not working a hundred percent? You already know where I'm at with this because the last couple of construction things that I've been involved with with the city have had issues with.
Yes, as Cory said, staff's spent considerable time. I think we had nearly two hundred dollars out on that street going through this to, and as Cory also stated, this is, this kind of redundancy, double check. It's a, it's the easiest way to locate. If you can go out there, hook up your locator to a wire, stick a probe in the ground, beat the ground, it'll lock it right down the line. It's just the simplest way.
Well, I'll tell you, now we know Eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred and one dollars and fifty cents is nowhere near what the cost is for two hundred hours, two hundred man-hours of city staff.
Yeah.
I have a problem with it.
Uh, I'm just saying, normal projects, I don't know. The staff would go out there and go through this, hire direct men's staff to go out there and make sure all this stuff was working that was part of the punch list.
Yep.
Before we acknowledge and close out a project.
I, it's not against you at all?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I understand what you're saying, because you're basically talking nine dollars an hour for our city staff to go out there and do this.
Now, if I just look at the other side, one hundred percent compliant. We still spent the same amount of time out there making sure it's more.
Did, did the contractor, uh, were they with you then when you were walking the street to make sure these items were done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I just go back five years. This tracer wire, it was a luxury. So, like I said, it's a nice feature to have, just a little more work to do with it, I call it the old way, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
N- no, I don't, I don't believe so unless there's additional questions.
Uh, let me propose something, gentlemen. The mayor had to step out for just a moment. I propose that we have a brief recess and when he comes back, we'll rejoin. Some move. You have a second?
Second.
Oh, any discussion?
You meant reconvene, correct?
Pardon?
You meant reconvene.
We'll reconvene, if not, we'll, we'll, we're gonna go into recess and reconvene you at the right time. I'll, I'll in favor of the recess, please say aye.
Aye.
Close name. Okay, we're in a brief recess.
Go ahead and obtain a motion to, to reconvene.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please, sir. Continue.
We're at the motion part.
Yeah, we're at the motion part.
We're at the motion for this. To accept the sixteen thousand.
Oh, we're at that motion, oh, geez.
Yeah, we're at that motion.
Thank you. I walked up.
We're in the jury.
I walked up, we're at a motion, we're covering a lot of territory.
No, we didn't, we don't have a motion. We're waiting for me.
Oh, we're waiting.
We're waiting to make the motion.
Okay, let me just double check my notes, sir.
He has it up on the screen.
Just wanna make sure I've got no other questions. So, looking for a motion then to approve the resolution accepting work for the 2017 street and utility improvements as complete and approving the final payment in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty excess.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We now move on to line item seven Delta, which is the Lister Food Shelf Water and Sewer Utility, City Administrator approval.
Mayor Hague, um, members of city council, we for you is just, well, what I'm looking for is how to handle something that we found through our utility billing audit. It wasn't something that was known of staff until we went through this audit. But apparently the Lister Food Shelf, uh, previously received no charge for water and sewer utility billing. What we've received, we've turned that back on for them because we didn't know why. Um, they've come to the city of the sewer requesting that we waive those fees for sewer water that's generally about, on average, fifty dollars per month. So that it's very low usage. It's really, um, associated mostly with the, with the, uh, Santeria access fee and the water access fee, your meter charges as they used to be called. Uh, so it's, it's roughly fifty dollars, uh, a, a month is what they're looking for. Um, in general, staff is looking for a direction from city council. If city council feels that this is an appropriate thing to do, uh, is to continue this, what I would recommend and what would be a cleaner way of doing it would be just for the city to donate the fifty dollars per month instead of having these, um, well, I'll call them one-off kind of agreements, side agreements with these, well, I'll call them one-off kind of agreements, side agreements with individual parties, customers of our utilities, and tracking that and monitoring that. And it just doesn't, it doesn't have that much holding value as far as understanding what's going on. So that's roughly $600 a month.
A year.
A year, sorry. Yeah, $600 a year. So for the remainder of this year, it'd be roughly $250 if council so chooses to move forward in this manner. And staff-wise, we direct that group to apply for the donation period, just like anybody else would for that. Now, our donation fund is at zero right now. So in order to do this, we would go into the negative by about $250. That's fine. It's a council decision. We can do that. But in general, I think it would be good to evaluate annually anyway because, you know, let's say the food shelf gets larger, they start using more water, that bill, $50 a month, goes to 150. That's a little bit different conversation, I feel. So I think it's good to keep it in the front of city council. You know, we have some options of what we want to do. The one thing staff and myself in particular worry about is just precedence it sets for other nonprofits. I understand, I mean, we have a lot of nonprofits in town. But the food shelf, I mean, they definitely, I know, run a very tight budget. They try to get as much, use as much money as they can to provide food for the community. So I think it's a great organization in that sense. But it's my job to make sure you guys are aware of all these different things that might be going on. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have and take directions on how you want to handle this request.
Anybody? Councilmember Valleys.
I don't think that it does too much to establish precedence because if we, if we do this the same way we would for, at the beginning of the year, for donations, other people or other organizations would have to apply as well.
Correct.
So it's not really establishing a precedence on it. I don't see any, any relationship with it.
Councilmember Kirby.
Just one comment. I think it's important that public knows they are paying their electric costs and things like this with their freezers and refrigerators and things like that. So I think the water part is a minimal charge. And is this a service charge they pay with water? Or are they paying water and sewage and the service charge?
Yeah, so just to clarify, the way the bills are set up, each, each water service has a water access fee, which is going to be $15 this year for a 5.8 centimeter. And then they have a sanitary access fee, which Rich probably knows what it is this year, 20? So that's 20. So right there is $35. They only have, they only use, they use less than 500 gallons of water per month. So the majority, $35 of their $50 billers is those sanitary access fee and water access fee. Now, those fees are designed to cover the fixed costs of the city. So the infrastructure, maintenance improvements, things like that. Go ahead.
If I may.
Councilmember Paul.
Okay, thank you. Two things. Number one is, it's pretty obvious it's time to knock off all these informal agreements that apparently have been going on for years without the saddle claw were here. That doesn't judge those organizations or say anything bad about them. It's just not the way to do business. The second I would have, the question I would have for a city administrator, it is attractive to me to say, yes, they would be part of our annual giving of grants, so to speak. The problem is tiny, because we don't normally do those till after the first of the year. We're right back in the same bind if we get to January, February. When do we normally decide those grants? Don't we do that about February?
So I can answer that. So generally, we have the grant, or the donation applications due sometime in February. We'll evaluate them either at the second meeting in February or the first meeting in March, in general. And that was, that was a point I was gonna make too. There might be a two or three month gap between, depending on how you want to, if you want to fund it for this year, there may be a gap. So you might want to take that into consideration, unless you want to change up the donation process.
So what we could do is if we decide to do this, we could fund it through March and then ask them to apply for a grant for the following year, the remainder of the following year.
That would work.
That would work, and we're out of this bind.
Question regards to, we're talking water and sewer here. The council member Kirby mentioned about the freezers. Is there an electrical charge too that is affiliated with the sewer food shelf?
Yes, and they are, and they're paying the electrical fee, and they are also paying the stormwater fee, which is $8 a month.
Okay. But we're just specifically looking at the nature of this, just water and sewer?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Sullivan.
I guess the only concern I have with potentially moving forward with what we're discussing is, do we set up cap for what we'll pay? Like, if they're averaging $50 a month, do we set it? Because obviously, I mean, if they end up with a water leak, or they're not maintaining their toilets, or their sinks, or they leak water on, that could add up pretty quickly. So I guess I'm just looking for what we're thinking on that end of it.
Yeah, so the idea is that a recommendation would be 50, you know, a lump sum, right? They get a lump sum for either the remainder of the year plus a few months in 2020, and if they apply for the donation period, it'd be for a 12-month average. So if they would have a leak, something like that, they would have to come to the city and we'd have to talk about it if that's the case. One thing with the new meters is that they're such a low user that they could set some pretty low thresholds to monitor their system too. So those leaks shouldn't go on for very long if, and we could help them. We obviously will help anybody to set that up, but we could have them have to set that up for their water usage. But if they do have a leak and they use $20,000 gallons one month, we're gonna have to have a conversation.
So to be clear, this first came up in August of 2019, correct? That's when it was noticed?
I believe so.
Okay. So we're looking really at eight, an eight-month waiver here. If we decide to go ahead at $50 per, we're looking basically at $400 to get us through March of 2020. And of course, with the idea that they're gonna have to go ahead and apply again through the, through our donations process. Anybody else have a reason? Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion then that we go ahead and give the food shelf the $50 per month for the next eight months through, or for eight months. That would conclude March of 2020. That would be used specifically for the water and sewer utility, and also to inform them that they must apply again for the donations, charitable donations in 2020 to be eligible.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to make that 50 per month or a lump sum of 400?
$400, yeah, totally, eight times the 50.
But not per month, in the words of they have a 60-month, they're okay?
Right.
Does that make sense?
Well, yeah.
We talked about a lump sum. They got a $400 budget between now and March.
Four, yeah, $400 for the eight months through March of 2020. Okay. Our city administrator approval.
And just to clarify, what I'll do, or what I'll have Zach do, is just give them a $400 credit on their utility bills, and then it's there, and then it just uses that up instead of a check. Unless you want me to handle it differently, though.
That'd be funny.
We have, the mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll second your motion.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. And let's make sure that we inform them ahead of time to make sure they get involved with the request for the charitable contribution for 2020. Okay, let's move on to light item seven, Fox Truck, which is the jetback truck order purchase approval.
Did we remove the HR utility?
Seventy has been replaced. It's been removed.
Mayor Hagg, members of city council, before you is, is an item that we're bringing, oh.
When was it removed?
Yeah, when did we officially remove that item? The motion was approved, the agenda was written. There was nothing to remove it.
Well, yeah, good point. Seventy, the Lister HR utility account.
I can make a motion. I was asking a question before we moved on.
I would like to make a motion to remove Seven Eve on the.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. The Lister HR utility account has been removed. Santa Foxtrot is the jetback truck order purchase approval, city administrator approval.
Mayor Hagg, members of city council, before you, and Public Services Director Cetero will give you just the logistics of this, is an item that is in the capital improvement plan. You'll look at the one that was, that was approved last year. We had a $500,000 allocation for 2020 for this. In order to actually receive that truck in 2020, we need to order it now. If you order it now, the delivery date, I believe, is in May, June of next year. So what we're looking at, and I'll kick it off to Rich here in a second, but really, approval to put the order in so that we can receive that truck next year.
And this would be via the capital lease program, correct?
Yes, and Rich can get into that a little bit.
Director Cetero.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, the current back truck is scheduled for replacement next year. In discussions with the different vendors and going through demos of the different brands of equipment out there, we found out some lead times, and they are, they are out there six months, and that's why we are here tonight, to, to get this moving along, to be able to get this piece of equipment in March. We need to give them the go-ahead tomorrow. If we wait till the next council meeting, that can slide all the way back to the end of May. So, a couple of reasons that we are looking to do this upgrade. The current unit, which you see pictured on the bottom of the single axle, has only a six-yard debris body and carries 800 gallons of fresh water on it. Like currently this week, staff is up working in the Zion Church Storm Sewer area. He is making a lot of trips because there's a lot of sediment in that area. The new unit has a 10-yard debris body and holds 1,500 gallons of water. So almost double the capacities. Like I said, staff did go out, they did go out, different vendors came to the city here, gave them the shows, you know, let them actually run the equipment, try it out. The Vector unit that is pictured on top is one that many cities have gone to, that has one feature that really stands out, that front neck, which is a suction tube, has, actually will slide out 15 feet. So a lot of times, they won't have to put extension tubes on, which is very time-consuming to drop down structures. So it's very time-efficient for staff to use, and that's one thing staff really liked about it. Ordering of the unit also includes two operator training classes. So two of our staff would get to go down to the Vector factory with, and actually a temp school on use and maintenance of the unit. And then staff is looking into doing another capital lease on the item, which at seven years would give up $70,100.
Question. I know you've done your due diligence on this, but for not only our benefit, but also for our citizens, our existing jetback that we have right now, what is the material condition of this particular unit? How much is it costing us basically to maintain on an annual basis right now? And is there any kind of a refund or any kind of a credit that we would get if we got rid of this particular, our old unit for this new unit?
The price of the 442-126 does include trade-in of the unit, and the number, I believe, is in the $30,000.
$10,000 a year to maintain?
Yes. For trade-in value.
For trade-in value.
About to maintain.
Yeah, maintaining, you know, it's normal, $5,000 to $7,000 a year, except for bigger items. The biggest downfall, obviously, debris tank, which I had touched on. The other item this truck, our current truck, can do, some of our sanitary pipes and storm pipes have pretty good slope on them. I don't know why in this town, but we have a pretty good slope. That truck doesn't have enough power inside of it to run those slopes, so we have a contracting that work out.
What are our contracting costs per year then? Would we have to go with jetter or something?
30 to 35 thousand per year.
That's what I was looking for, 30 to 35K. So basically, half of what we're looking at spending for this, we don't need equipment now. Got you. Okay. City administrator approval.
In concept, the idea is that we would do municipal lease similar to what we get. This is a, this is a very large purchase, obviously. This would be funded through our enterprise funds. The actual terms of the lease, we would work through that, depending on different things financially. We've talked internally about a four-year lease or a three-year lease. It's just that lease payment goes up and, and the personnel budget will look at what those different leases terms will do to rates over the near term. Long term, obviously, paid off sooner, though that falls off sooner. But what we want is we want pretty consistent rates, especially for water, moving forward. We do have a lot of large costs coming down the pipe for water as well over the next five years or so. There's planned 5.5 million dollars worth of items that are gonna be required. So we want to be cognizant of that as we purchase some of these larger ticket items.
So to be clear, that seven years for the $70,100, that's just basically for planning purposes right now, prior to the personnel budget committee getting a chance to look at 2020 and the, and the upcoming years, to determine where we are as far as our CIP/CEP monies.
Correct. And we wouldn't go out past the seven-year lease on this piece of equipment. So this would be, I guess, best case as far as year, year value or 70,000, as we, if we have a shorter-term lease, that number would go up, and that would then affect those rates. So worst case for rates, to keep those as low as possible over the near term, it would be that $70,100 value number.
Councilmember Huntington.
You know, you mentioned we farm out, or what do you call it, contract jetter come in. Will we be able to do the same with the new machine to other communities around the area? You mean, open it to whoever?
Great question. If I, so let me just clarify the question. So like, having our guys go to different cities and we can look at that, we generally don't do that because we're busy trying to do our own stuff.
I personally don't believe trying to go into private business and take private business away. You know, to me, if a local town calls for emergencies, that's something where you help. For regular routine maintenance, that's, we need to take care of ourselves.
Right.
Councilmember Valleys, you got something to do up there?
Yeah.
There's an ethical issue of taking, taking city-owned property to go and use that in another town. There's an issue with that. Not to mention that while you're there, if you break something, while you're, while you're working at somebody else's place, yeah, there's some issues with that that I can see. Not to mention some liability issues in the area.
So what we're looking for in general is just approval to put in the order for this if you guys, if this group feels comfortable with it. That way, we could take, get delivery as early as March. Soon as the, basically, the snow comes off the road, we can start working on our items. The other thing Rich kind of alluded to was, we haven't generally been maintaining our stormwater system over the years. We have a lot of storm structures that are full of sediment, as Rich alluded to. This will help us to do that more efficiently. Not to say that our equipment that we're using, that we have right now, can't do it. It's just, we'll be more efficient with our time to be able to get to it. And I think that's the limiting factor. Right now, it's just, we don't have the time, unless we hire additional resources, this will help us stretch some of those employees to be able to do some of the stormwater maintenance, which we should be doing.
So for the benefit of, again, not only us, but also our citizenry, come March, now we're on into September, probably, I'm thinking by the end of October. So we're looking at about a five or six-month cycle, that this machine is out and about every single day doing something associated with whether it's our waste treatment system or our stormwater system?
So, our goal, and Foster and I are working on this, is to have a sanitary sewer maintenance plan. So in the sanitary sewer maintenance plan, you do it, maintain a quarter of your sanitary sewer collection a year. So you do a quarter of that, you got your trouble spots that you're supposed to do one to two times a year, you get those done. And then you also relay your sanitary, sorry, not sanitary, storm sewer into that grid, and you try to maintain that in the same manner that once every four years, you know, and then you have your hot spot priorities that need to be maintained more often.
And Rich alluded to this, if I may, the 25% of your collection system every year, that's required by our legal Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust that we're, how we maintain our sewer system. So we're required to do it, and that's why we've been contracting it out, is we've been contracting out most of that service every year, that $30,000, $35,000. So we would then be able to do that stuff in-house.
This is great. Jack, of course, if you didn't know this. Well, this is great, Jack, of course, if you didn't know this, so I'm glad that we've had this opportunity to learn a little bit about how this whole jet, jetter system works and why we're doing what we're doing, and the timeframe and everything like that. So, thank you for the education on that. Councilmember Fallow.
Question, Rich, the sediment issues that you're talking about over by Zion, does that have anything to do with why we wind up having cornstalk fest when there's that giant rain that comes through and the cornstalks are, are literally coming out through the?
That's part of the problem that we're trying to unravel. We're trying to figure out the whole dumbwood, your cornstalk fest, Anderson Park, that whole intricate balance of what's going on there. We're trying to camera it, we've got elevations, but we can't camera it because there's so much sediment in that collection system that we can't even run a camera down the line. So, until we get there, it could be, could not be. But like I said, we're trying to find the answer right now. Because when they're redoing it on with, with one twelve, would be a perfect time to find the answer before they get there.
Sure.
Mayor, I have two questions.
Councilmember Croft, please.
Next year, we're planning on having one additional person in parks and streets.
Yes.
Is this, is that addition of the, um, full-time equivalency there going to be able to operate this equipment? In other words, is that part of why we need another person? Because it, obviously, if we have thirty thousand dollars being contracted out, that's not man hours or people hours that we're using now from our staff, but we're going to have to have our people running this machine. I guess they're already running it, so let's do it. But I realize the additional time we contracted out, will this extra person help do that, is what I'm saying?
If I may, I can answer that a little bit. Just to clarify, the, the streets and parks or public works individual, that's, that's, uh, recommended to be hired, that person won't be operating this, it'll be strictly, strictly water and wastewater.
Okay.
So, in that, um, you'll see this, and we've kind of talked about it a little bit at Personnel Budget, but having an additional, uh, water, wastewater supervisor, and that'll free up some, that'll essentially be hiring an additional, um, operator as well, maybe, you know, potentially. So, um, but the streets and parks or public works operator won't have the daily access. There's, there's something that they need. I know that this, our, our old, or our current piece of equipment's been used to, to dig holes for posts and things like that, um, it works pretty well. But, uh, in general, it'll be a water wastewater, uh, piece of equipment.
The other question I have is, I'm not clear about a dollar amount. On the screen, we have a motion for four forty-two, one twenty-eight, thirty. The piece of paper we were given has fifty-two, two ninety-six, seventy-five. Which is it?
That's for a different piece of.
That's for a ditch which.
I believe that's for the next, yeah, I know that was.
Okay.
Well, I now have a question, uh, because we found a secondary purpose for our existing jetter vac truck, uh, for hole digging, you said? For the thirty thousand dollars that we would get for trade-in, is it worth it for us to go ahead and hang on to this and maintain it?
No.
Okay, glad to ask.
You're, you're, you're reaching the bottom curve of the bell.
Okay.
And ask Commissioner Fallowies about that for expenses.
So, we won't see any kind of a hole digger type of thing coming?
The new unit will be able to do it more effectively. We don't, we don't need a glorified hole-soldering, yes.
Does anybody else have anything for Director Kachar or our city administrator regarding this jetter vac truck purchase? Saying done, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion then to approve the purchase of the 2020 Vacker, Factor from McQueen Equipment for four hundred forty-two thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars and thirty cents via the municipal lease.
Similar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We now move on to line item seven golf, which is the kinetic leasing capital lease items approval. City Administrator approval.
Mayor Hage, uh, there was a city council, you'll see a handout, I think that's the handout that, um, Councilmember Croft was looking at, uh, that kind of clarified something that was, uh, I guess a misprint in the actual council packet. Um, but I will turn it over to Rich since he's here to kind of talk about this.
So, uh, for the CIP, CEP, we did that, get a couple more pieces of equipment updated here. One, it's an electric service truck, and, uh, the purpose of this truck will be to kind of, ironic that they both kind of came together, but it will be to haul around the ditch which HX fifty. Um, the current truck is, uh, kind of the last of its life. It's, uh, staff said it's, uh, almost a Flintstone Mobile. They said, uh, it's, it's too bad because it still runs good, but, uh, the, the floor is getting thin.
The HX fifty is the, is the ditch which?
Yes, is a vacuum excavator. Uh, currently, that service truck is down in crisis, they're getting a service body put on it. Uh, the other item is the ditch which HX fifty, which is a vacuum excavator. Um, if you've seen the guys around over here on, on the eastern part of town here, they've been out doing, uh, underground conversions. Um, before we, uh, well, this was identified in the CIP, Justin and I, uh, in July, applied for a Minosha safety grant, um, and it's a ten thousand dollar matching grant. They will match up ten thousand dollars of whatever your purchase is if, if awarded. We were, I think, two or three weeks ago, we were, uh, notified that we were awarded the full ten thousand dollars. So, that is why this payment request form, the city of La Sura will actually pay ditch which for the vacuum extractor, the full amount, but then we're going to request ten thousand less from kinetic leasing, and we'll use the ten thousand from Minosha to offset that cost. Because we have to show, show proof of payment to Minosha to get our ten thousand dollars.
Understood. Any questions? Saying done, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the submission of payment request forms to kinetic leasing for electric service truck and electric vacuum excavator for the fifty-two thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
So.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, sir. We now move on to seven hotel, which is the government capital corporation lease item approval, city administrative approval.
Mayor Hage, members of the state council, I will, uh, let Public Services Director Kachar handle this one as well.
Director Kachar.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this, uh, lease statement request form is, to Corin Maine, is payment request number two from Corin Maine. It is for water meter, water meter and radio module installations. Store materials on hand, installation of the collectors, the collectors is the diff, that's the word they use for the antennas. There's one up on the upper towers, there's one on the intermediate tower. That actually gets the signal from the meters and sends it out to the, to the, uh, network. Uh, payment on the hosting of the AMI system. This system is cloud-hosted, we have an annual payment with census. They, they will host all the data, so we don't have to have data, uh, servers and technology maintenance here on our end. So, total of this application is six hundred thousand nine one nine twenty-eight. A couple updates, uh, we're up to one thousand two hundred and twenty-two installations, which is sixty percent. Seven hundred eighty-six, uh, meter installations for a unit.
Okay. Any questions for, or Councilmember, uh, Solomon?
Just a quick question on this, that I see or hear that there's potentially a change in a lot of some of the new meters as well? Two different meter?
I, I believe I can address that. So, there's, there's one meter, it's called an allied meter. Some of the individuals that have, known to have, um, freezing down there, of their water services, have these. I don't believe, and Rich, you can fill me in, I don't believe that any meters are having to be swapped out. I believe that at times, people schedule an appointment, and then it's somehow alerted to them that they need this special meter that we don't, we don't have on hand yet. Um, but I think that's what you're referring to.
Well, I just seen where somebody had one replaced, and then they got a letter saying they had to replace again.
Oh.
And that's why I was asking the question, I didn't know, I didn't understand what was happening.
Yes, there's forty properties that have a documented history of either running water to prevent freezing in the wintertime, or their service did freeze up.
That makes sense.
The allied meters can, can monitor the temperature of the water going through them and can have custom set points set for freezing to prevent that. So, that way the customer doesn't have to run their water all, all winter long, and the city doesn't have to pay for wasted water running all winter long.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a real quick question.
Councilmember Kirby.
Six hundred thousand dollars, is that the transmission, is that part of the transmission, or is that for the whole project? And you talked about the transmitter that kind of helps with the, um?
That's part of the six hundred thousand, the collectors that actually collect it, and then it sends it through the internet up to their cloud storage system. And then it's called an RNA, RNA, and that staff here will have trained here in the next couple of weeks to actually get them there to see the data that is coming in the network. We're also building and working on building the customer portal right now. So, some of those, you know, like a percentage of it, because we've had meetings on it to get that going, some of that is also within here, in the six hundred thousand.
Just understanding the math here, we're, this, the total project is one point six million.
Yes.
And we're looking for six hundred thousand, uh, which means we still, at some point, are going to have to pay this million dollars.
Correct.
Okay, so we could be expecting to see that. At what point?
There'll be, I'm sure there will, will be another one in the next month. Probably won't be the big one, the probably, the biggest one will be November sometime. Uh, we're expecting about two thousand electric meters to show up next month. So, there'll be, oh, pay request, I'm sure, coming through in early November for two thousand electric meters, plus the remainder of the water meters.
So, this one point six million, that covers the water meters as well as the electric meters?
Correct.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure on that. Councilmember Solomon.
Just to clarify on that, this is the second payment, correct?
Correct.
So, I don't recall what the first month was.
Like four hundred, uh, four hundred something, four hundred and two.
Only a hundred, hundred and one thirty-three.
Yeah, sorry, I must have missed it.
One thirty-three, sixteen.
Six grand, okay.
Thank you.
So, we're, we'd be about, uh, forty percent paid then of this, and this is coming all out of the enterprise fund, correct?
Yeah.
Between the electric and the water, wastewater, uh, water, too?
Correct.
Perfect. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? Anything?
Well, I have lots to say, but I'm probably not going to say.
Okay. Entertain a motion then to approve the submission of payment request form to government capital corporation for payment number two for the AMI meter project of six hundred thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Similar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Saying none, Mayor?
Included in this, we are also keeping five percent retention of public's claim to request. So, I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Piggybacking on that, though, on that statement, what, how are we going to verify? Are we going to randomly inspect some of these before we close this open facility?
We, we have been randomly inspecting and requesting better pictures of finalized products.
Okay. So, right now, they're taking photos of the final product, so we can go and look at the database, but we will need to do some queuing, you see?
How are we going to be with hitting the, uh, October first, starting after? No, it can't happen. I mean, we won't have all the meters in place yet. We're still going to have probably two to three hundred that haven't made it to the tent yet. And we're going to bat around some ideas on how we can kind of encourage those last two to three hundred to want to.
So, if I'm hearing correctly, that we have somewhere between two hundred and three hundred out of the seven hundred eighty-six that are remaining that have yet to notify the contractor?
Well, possibly.
Possibly.
Question on that. Uh, in the future, if we get into these types of things, we should have some type of a clause in there for you're going to have it done by X and X amount of time, or you'll lose X and X amount of money on it. And actually, in the contract, it does have that, but they sent out, uh, documents right from the get-go before the contract was even signed by, by both parties because of material supply. Like I said, we, the goal was to be done October first. We can't even get, we can only get fifty electric meters by, by October first. This equipment supply is sold behind right now. And they, they've, they made us aware of that right from the get-go.
All right, thanks, Matt.
So, we have a motion, we have a second, and anything else for our additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now move on to line item seven India, which is the approved accepting of the ship mini grant, city administrative approval.
Mayor Hage, members of city council, um, I did more good news about grants, and, uh, Rich's team kind of writing some grants and getting some, some, some things. I'll, I'll kick it over to Rich, but this is really, related to the Parks Open Spaces Trail System master plan and getting some funds from a local organization to help, to help me for that.
Director Kachar.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, good things on this goes out to our streets and parks manager, TJ Heinertsee, and a local resident that actually is on the ship board that brought this opportunity to us. So, uh, TJ did fill out this application, he had asked me to review it, I reviewed it, turned it in asking, and, yeah, they approved us for five thousand for the development of our parks, open spaces and trails master plan.
Is there any, are there any, uh, caveats in regards to how that money could be used, or it just goes into the general fund for the parks, the master, the master parks plan?
I can answer that. It'll, it'll be used to pay for some of that plan that was approved by city council. I can't remember the, the total cost of that plan, I want to say it's around thirty thousand dollars. So, five of that will be paid for this, for this grant, so that'll, we have some, some additional funds. That, that money was coming from the general fund, so that'll help out.
Okay, anybody else have anything, Councilmember Fallow?
Yeah, I want to, you know, to, to lose out there for, uh, to TJ for this. Um, you know, we've had this discussion before about, uh, you need a plan, you need a plan first. You have a plan first, and you have an idea as to what that's going to cost, and then you find the money. But you have to have the plan in, uh, in, uh, more, in more of the discussions I had with TJ, and I think that you're going to know what I'm talking about, that there was over two million dollars worth of grant funds that were out there for parks that wasn't used in a particular grant. And if we would have had everything in order, which is why we're doing the park study that we are, it could have been available for that, for those types of funds. So, again, thanks, I'll to TJ for us for this.
And not only to TJ, but also to this local resident. I'd like to get that information so I can make contact with that individual, if I may, please.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, like to get a motion then for accepting the grant funds and entering into a grant agreement with the Brown Nicollet County Health Board ship. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. We now move on to our comments, reports, and items of appreciation. Councilmember Kirby, sir.
Copy right away. First of all, uh, tomorrow night, I have a, um, I'm one of these briefs that can, um, La Sura community had a meeting that's September twenty-fourth, six-thirty, district office. Anybody interested in some, uh, information afterwards? Or if you'd like to give me a little information you want me to share with them, let me know. A Ridgeview Hospital and, um, had their joint board meeting tonight at five o'clock in Bell Plain. That would be with the Sidley, uh, Ridgeview Clinic and the, or Hospital and Laconia Ridgeview Hospital. I wasn't able to be there because I was here for an EDA meeting, which was tonight at five, five fifteen. So, I'm spreading myself then, I'm trying to do what I can do. Uh, EDA meeting, um, covered a few things, um, uh, we kind of went through some of the guidelines and policies with the revolving loan account, um, talked about some of the snags in the one-sixty-nine sale, and of course, the Kingsway acquisition, there's some ideas being kicked around with lot sales and things like that, so. Lastly, I'd like to, to, um, just, um, kind of announce, uh, we celebrated the life of here. Lastly, I'd like to, to just kind of announce, we celebrated the life of Harry Thurl on Friday at Chriswortham Church, and he was, as many of you know, a longtime police chief here in town. And on behalf of the council and the city, I'd like to give the family our condolences and thank him for his years of service. So, thank you.
The community ad meeting that you referred to, do you have anything, do you have anything that you might be able to inform the community about the timing, agenda for this meeting?
I, I did have a chance to look at the agenda briefly before I came, but I can't, nothing I can share with you right now, so I'm sorry.
That's fine. Councilmember Huntington.
Yes, Mayor, this Wednesday, my HRA meeting is scheduled for four o'clock. Anybody wants to show up, sure, you can come. Thursday, me and my men in blue here have a Murph Puck meeting at five-thirty down at the wastewater treatment plant, and you're more than welcome to show up for that, too, so. So you can do that one. I'll let you do that one. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Solomon.
Had an EDA meeting tonight, as Councilmember Crouby alluded to. A good discussion tonight, around all the topics that he brought up. Had Murph Puck on Thursday, and me and Councilmember Huntington also had a transit meeting sometime between mail and the.
That's the Thursday you said?
Murph Puck on Thursday, yes.
Yeah, you did, then you said what about the MVRT?
We had a transit meeting last Tuesday, last Thursday. I think the only thing we, that comes to mind was the purchase of a bus.
Yep, that was it.
They approved a bus purchase.
Really? Okay. Good deal. Must be picking up a lot of riders then, between La Sura and hundreds.
No, I think we're on a five, we're on a five-year cycle with buses. I think it was on a mile a day, it was because of the grant money.
Correct.
Oh, okay. Anything else?
No.
To go, the Councilmember Fableys.
Let's see, charter commission was last week. We reviewed chapters one through four, proposed some changes in there, which I think is gonna be good, beneficial for the, for the city. We've got chapters, let's see, five and six, I think, are for, for January, for January's meeting. We should have proposed changes for one through four, coming back for that meeting. And depending on how that goes, that should be coming out for city council. Yeah, Murph Puck on last Thursday of, of each month. And with that, we're still on rate reviews. We are still waiting for, I forgot what the name of the company is that did the rate study for us. It's Tilly is the last.
Baker Tilly.
Baker Tilly.
Baker Tilly, yeah.
And we kind of sent them back to the drawing board to do more work with Rich and Foster, because there seems to be a disconnect or a misunderstanding about the agro peers portion and their, their treatment facility as it comes into ours, and what's being treated, what's not being treated, how it is, and so on and so forth. The logistics of that, it really comes down to whether or not, when we're moving forward with the budget for two thousand and twenty, we kind of need the real information for that, for setting our rates, to make sure that we're gonna be, you know, balanced.
So is that an agenda item then for this meeting, that this rate study analysis is gonna be completed by?
Yes, but I don't know if it's going to be completed for, for this meeting. The idea was is that it was going to be, but at the last, I questioned on this, which was last week, I got, they're still working on it, so.
Kind of hard to put together the budget without knowing what the potential rate increase or decrease is going to be.
To be, to be fair, actually, we've got, we already have a budget that's out there, but we're waiting on this information to see what else has to be done. So, we'll see what happens when it comes out.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Councilmember Crouby.
Yes, on the fourteenth of September, there was an event at the dog park, the Dog Day of Summer. The Lions and Rotary Clubs in our town sponsored that with a great amount of assistance from the city. Mr. Mayor, I'm speaking for you, but indicating that you came, thank you. And he helped us unveil the plaque that indicates the major donors from the community, namely Rotary, Lions, Treasures in Town, and the Carl and Donna Smith Foundation. The event went very well, and I urged our citizens to go look at the, at the plaque. It really speaks well of our community. It, it tells them that we have a community that does things correctly. So, thanks to Jasper who worked on that, it really looks good. Part of that event, and I'm stepping a little bit out of my, my ballpark here, but WSB, our Parks and Trails consultants were there. Two of them came and interviewed people and encouraged people to take the online survey. They contacted me afterwards and asked me to help a little bit, try and encourage people to fill out the survey. So, if you haven't done it as a council member, please do, and to our public, please do. We want input as we form our works, or we form a Parks and Trail plan. Planning Commission was due to meet last week, they did, or two weeks ago, I can't remember the exact date now.
Two weeks ago.
Did not meet in September because of quorum issues, much as Councilmember Fableys pointed out. They will meet again in October. And City Administrator Krugel, Krugel and I have a Minnesota Municipal Power Agency meeting tomorrow in Shakopee. I wouldn't hold my breath to find out what's gonna happen with the wind turbine and the solar request. They're still processing how they're gonna do that. It's not a bad sign, it's just probably won't happen tomorrow. We probably won't know. That's all I have.
Thank you. Director Kachar, do you have anything else more, since you're on share with the community? Okay. Director Lawrence, anything?
Uh, yes, Public Services Open House is October second, and Jasper can talk more later.
Public Services Open House, October second, you have a time? Thank you.
Yeah.
City Administrator approval.
Thank you. We had a very good charter commission meeting, it was probably one of the better ones I've ever been to. It lasted about an hour. So there's a lot of really good discussion, so, yeah, city council, just a refresher on that format. If, if there are any charter amendments that are recommended by the charter commission, they would then come to the city council. At that time, they would have to be approved unanimously in order to be in effect. And that wouldn't go into effect until thirty days after approval. So, a little bit different process than anything else, code update, so if we get to that point, that'll likely be next year, maybe February is when you could potentially see some charter updates for those first four chapters. Trying to think, the, the, the Public Works Open House will be at the mall, in the mall parking lot during one of the farmers markets on that Wednesday. We'll bring out as many pieces of equipment as we can, we'll have some food, hot dogs. Stacy just sent me a draft of the flyer that we're gonna use to market it. So, we're gonna hopefully get as many people out there as we can. Hopefully, it'll be nice, warm weather, and we can enjoy a nice fall day.
Do we wanna go ahead and make sure that we get notice of this event, so that myself and the members of our city council can be in attendance?
Sure, we will, we will. We'll, we'll notice this to follow up.
Perfect.
And then, yeah, we have an MMPA meeting tomorrow, looking forward to that. So we'll, that's about it, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question for City Administrator and our city clerk.
Sure.
Regarding the ordinance that we passed for zoning and subdivision, the zoning code, in other words, is that in effect now?
It, yes, it is in effect. We have copies of it available. It won't be published for, I believe, about another two weeks. So they received it, it just, because of the sheer size of it, it takes a long time for them to actually put it on the internet. But it is effective, it, seven days after.
It was published, yes.
Yeah.
Have we received any sort of feedback from the community regarding the planning of zoning?
Nothing yet, no. Yeah, it's still, it's still very new, but there will be feedback, I know this.
Anybody else have anything, Councilmember Fableys?
I have a question. So, for the, for changes to the charter that would have to come, that come up to city council to vote on, has to be a unanimous. What if a city council member's not here? Is it unanimous with who's here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Solomon.
I just thought of one other thing that I was gonna ask about. So we dropped item seven echo tonight, and just would ask that we bring that back to the table along with our other boards that our city council appointed to have a discussion on how we handle late fees at some point, to have that conversation with the next meeting or somewhere down the line, in the near future.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else have anything? Entertainer motion for agenda?
Some more.
Accept it?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
No.